America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is, I'd like to welcome you to the Bryan City Council meeting for Monday, November 16th, 2015. The first, number one on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the November 2nd meeting. Gentlemen, what's your preference on that?
Well, I've heard no changes, so I'll make a motion when you approve it.
Second?
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes. Number two on the agenda is the Clerk Treasurers' report. Lori?
The council's been presented with the Clerk Treasurers' report for the month ending October 31st, 2015.
Looks okay to me. I move we adopt it.
I'll second that.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Number three on the agenda is the hearing of public concerns. Is there anyone who'd like to address the council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda. This is an ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 41, 2015. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of $25,000 and of $75,000 for professional services and loans for the revolving loan fund. Total amount requested for that fund, $100,000. And it's also an appropriation request of $6,230.73 to transfer from the microloan fund to the revolving loan fund, as that fund will be collapsing at the end of this year. CDBG's going to combine it into one. So total amount of appropriation requested, $106,230.73.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second that.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second?
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes. Item number five on the agenda is an ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 42, 2015. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending November 30th, 2015. This is a transfer request of $40,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 504 refuse fund for general spending purposes, and a transfer of $65,230.73 from the microloan fund to the 208 revolving loan fund. Total amount of transfer requested, $105,230.73.
If there's no problem, my move we suspend that.
I'll second it.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
A move we adopt.
Second?
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Excuse me, I have a question. This $105,230, is that kind of in conjunction with the one previous?
Yes.
Okay, but it's a thousand dollars off. What am I missing?
Well, we had to appropriate $6,500 that wasn't budgeted for in the microfund.
Right.
So you had to appropriate that so that we could ultimately transfer the amount in total to the 208 revolving loan fund.
Okay. So there's another thousand dollars.
Well, and then forty thousand. The $40,000 transfer was from the general fund to the refuse fund.
Right, but the total is, is off a thousand dollars, I guess.
It's still, it's correct.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
All righty. We'll go on to item number six. Another ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 43, 2015. To amend Bryan Municipal Code Section 537.12, misuse of the 911 system.
Yes. Section 537.12 of the Bryan Municipal Code is a misuse of 911 when somebody improperly uses our 911 system. And in reviewing and researching that section, I noticed that it had some improper references to sections of the Ohio Revised Code. So this is simply correction to make reference to the proper sections of the ORC. Everywhere where you see Section 4931.40, et cetera, it previously said Section 128, which is not a problem.
Otherwise, there's no real change in it. It's just reference wise.
Correct.
I'll move we suspend.
Second?
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Thank you.
I am number seven. Another ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 44, 2015. An ordinance amending codified ordinance Section 953.02 relating to monthly charges for residential refuse collection and declaring an emergency. This is a request from the refuse department for an increase in our monthly refuse rates. They have seen a decrease in our recycling income, as well as an increase in cost to the landfill. In addition, the general fund is supplementing the refuse department for the shortcoming. And as it's an enterprise fund, they're attempting to keep it as a fully funded enterprise fund based on rates. So the increase that the city is asking for is a $4 increase beginning for bills rendered on or after, due on or after January 1st, 2016, which would take the regular monthly garbage rate up to $23.50 per month, and the senior rate up to $19 per month. In addition, in the following year, for bills rendered on, due on or after January 1st, 2017, there would be an additional $2 increase, taking regular monthly service rates up to $25.50, and senior rates up to $21 per month.
I might say we have tried to keep the refuse rates as low as we could in compared to other areas. We have a real good system in Bryan. If you see the amount of trash that we do have and we do take out, Bryan is very lucky to keep the town as clean as it has. However, if, if this continues to climb, and we are required to recycle, I mean by law, we're required to recycle so much, and we do know that some other cities and towns around us have farmed us out, so to speak, to commercial type individuals. And I, we've been watching this closely, and I've even checked with a couple local towns and villages that do this. And it's, it's something that the council might want to take a look at down the line if these rates keep climbing and, in order to stay above. I'm not ready to make that proposal yet, but it's something I think that we need to study. The, on an all pickup, or fortunately, we do pick up once a month, all over. There's ways you can reduce that to go back to, say, every other month, or two times a year, and so forth, in places. When I've talked to the individuals, they say, "Well, then you, you still have a big amount, and there's a large amount," and so forth. So there's pros and cons of doing that all the way. The other thing is what you put your trash in, I'm going to refer to Archibald Stryker or two that I've talked to, and they buy the, individual households buy the big type
So does Edgerton.
barrels in Edgerton. They buy those, they're like tubs and so forth, that people have to row in and out. And then they also have another one that's for recycling. It's a, it's a lower one, and so forth. So the advantage of, of that is you don't have to buy garbage trucks, you don't have to have the labor intensity on that. One thing that we're going to have to watch very closely, if CCNO should close or reduce and so forth, if we don't get, if we don't have CCNO help on those garbage trucks, that could be another reason would trigger going to looking at another system along that way. It's...
I'll make another comment to that. When you start looking at that type of avenue, you also start looking at giving up monthly pickup.
General trash pickup.
And we have fought hard to keep that monthly program up, and we talked back in our days back there about, in the beginning, about going from a monthly to semi-annually or once a year. And we've said it's been to the best interest of the city to do the monthly as, to keep it clean. It's been a worthwhile thing, but it's getting costly.
Now, I know that the, the ones that have that, when they say all pickup, some of them have one large item a month. In other words, not a whole curb like you see us have. You might be able to put a couch out, and that would be it, or something like that. So there's pros and cons, but it's something we're going to have to keep an eye on closely because of these, you know, the rates are, are getting like that. I'm watching the Toledo situation, and I think they were talking about buying the trash containers and everything. It was up in the millions of dollars. You just don't change overnight if you're going to go into a program like that. But we've got, we've got a pretty good system here. Our town's pretty clean. I think we want to keep that going as long as we can.
Tyson, what's our, the recycle in regards to selling the cardboard and recycling? What's that revenue down? Isn't it around 60% it's down, or something like that?
Fifty.
Fifty percent?
Yeah.
Last, over the last, what, three to five years?
Yeah.
So we've lost 50% revenue off of that.
And now some, some... Yeah, some are starting their own, there's a company doing their own, our own recycling, you know, their own cardboard and everything, and that, you know, that, and you see these people come in and, and, you know, when we have scrap, when you see these scrappers come in, when the, when the metal's way down, you don't see them. When the cost for metal that you can get, then they're in here scrapping and doing that, that kind of stuff, you know? So we do furnish three rolls of garbage bags to the folks each year, you know, along that line, and that stayed pretty much stable as far as that costs in the last year or two. But it's, we just transferred, what, $40,000 tonight from the 1% over to the refuse. That shouldn't happen.
Well, and they're also in need of a trailer, and they've got a, an equipment need out there. The trailer's $32,000, $33,000. They don't have the fund balance to support it.
So that's what's causing this.
Well, my opinion is that a user tax is the fairest tax there is, and that what I would consider this is a user tax. Actually, you're just paying for the services. But we've done so well over the years of keeping that down. We're still, I think, in another year, we'll be even with what they are paying out of town right now, if I'm not mistaken. Isn't that right?
Yeah, you, you have a lot of things to, to put together. You have to look at the cost of picking up, but you also have what containers you use and how they do that. In a lot of these towns, they, they call it a bandit, that they, they will reach over and pick it up and so forth, and they have some situations where, yeah, on streets where there's a lot of cars parked and everything to get in and out. And our people do a tremendous job picking up the trash for us right now.
Oh, another thing is there's been special times when a person is handicapped, and they'll go right up to the door and pick them up too.
We have that. They get a letter from the doctor, we go up to the door and, and pick that up. Now, I'm not saying that outside groups wouldn't do that, but we...
We know we do.
Yeah, we do that.
Well, we know the biggest issue is All Trash Day.
Yes.
All Trash Day is one day a week, and it takes a full 20 or 25% of our labor for the entire street department, which is a big number.
Yeah.
Of course, them costs go up every year, so...
Yeah.
The All Trash Day is something that really eats into the budget, and it's, it's a service that we provide, that we probably provide very cheaply when you consider the stuff we haul out. I think it's almost, it's a day, it's almost a two-day affair, you know, on that trash pickup.
Yeah, right, right.
Which is a good thing. I want to reiterate something Tommy said last year. That's why it's very, very important that people from out of town do not put their garbage out for us to pick up. We cannot afford to do it. And it's happening, and, and I really encourage people to turn them in, because I guarantee you, if I see it, I'll turn them in.
Who's paying the price? We're paying the price.
That's right. That's right.
The other benefit that we have that may go un, unseen sometimes is the fact that you can put as much garbage out during the week as long as it's in the city of Bryan garbage bags, where if you go to a bin setup, then it's only whatever will fit in the bin. And so that first trash pickup after Christmas, or some of those other special times, we're able to put out whatever, whatever you have, where if we would go to a bin system, then we wouldn't have that benefit. I think that we have become accustomed to a certain standard here in the city of Bryan, and we're just trying to maintain that standard.
But it could get to the point where we may have to...
May have to look at something else at some point, yes.
Well, if we're ready to vote, I'll motion, make the motion, we suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Keith.
Number eight on the agenda is a resolution. Please number and read.
Resolution number 21, 2015. A resolution stating the services that the city will provide to the proposed annexation of property located in the northeast quarter of Section 22 in Plaski Township, known as parcel number 0632200002.010.
I'll cover that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm going to handle eight and nine together, actually.
Eight and nine.
Right. These are similar resolutions, and what this is, is we've had two property owners out on County Road D, this is out by the airport, who have requested to annex into the city. And as part of the annexation process, we provide a resolution of services which states those utilities and services that will be provided to those properties should the commissioners approve the annexation. The, the annexation petition has been filed from both of these property owners with the county commissioners. It's scheduled for hearing in January. Should that be approved by the county commissioners, it will be coming back to the council next year for approval by the city.
Okay. Questions, anyone?
So what, what is it exactly we're approving tonight?
The resolution of services, which attached to this resolution, you will see that all of the department heads provide those services that would be provided to those particular parcels, should they be annexed to the city.
Okay. Lori, did you want to read the other resolution for item nine, or just number it?
I'll read it separately because they have to be approved separately.
All right, because Rhonda was talking about them together. Okay.
Just describing it, to give me the description of what it is.
Okay. So we'll work on resolution number 21 now?
So basically, what we're saying here is, we're just, if it, if we agree to annex them in, then we are going to provide services. We're not determining anything as far as the annexation.
Correct.
Okay.
And they're not getting services now?
I think one property has requested temporary electric hookup because they needed to start building before the weather broke. So it was our understanding that with the, the annexation petition filed, that we would try to provide temporary electric out there until they could get the annexation process completed. The other property is already out there and up, so...
I think, I just read where, or heard that the county commissioners are acting upon the annexation, aren't they?
Right, I believe it's up for hearing January 7th, or something like that.
A move we suspend. I'll second that.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Make a motion to pass.
Second?
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Since it's the same thing, I'll move to suspend resolution 22 also.
I'm sorry, I think I have to read it because I have a different parcel number.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Lori, would you please number and read the resolution for item nine?
Resolution number 22, 2015. A resolution stating the services that the city will provide to the proposed annexation of property located in the northeast quarter of Section 22 in Plaski Township, known as parcel number 0632200002.009.
Motion stands. Second?
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Okay, item number 10 is employment. Shoots fighters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Firefighter EMT Jared McCann will complete his probationary period on December 1st, 2015. Because council will not meet again until after that date, I'm asking that we place Jared into regular employment status effective December 1st, 2015.
Yeah, no discussion, I won't make that motion. We'll do that.
Second?
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11 on the agenda, if we're going to set a special meeting.
Yeah, every year you have to approve the budget and get lined up for your coming year. Well, we'll have our budget and act on any other department business set for Tuesdays, December 29th at 12 o'clock noon. I might say we're having budget discussions with all department heads Wednesday, and then we'll have a budget to present to you on December 29th, along with any other year windups that we need to do. So I'd like to set that special meeting for December 29th, 2015, here at the council chamber at 12 noon.
Okay.
No need a...
Give a motion to that effect?
So move.
I'll second it.
Rick Hoopie.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
I will not be at that meeting, but I will move, yes.
Well, that concludes our meeting for the evening, as far as the agenda is concerned. Is there anything that you'd like to...
Yeah, down in our general discussion, first of all, before we go to that, I want to, well, let's go to the salt budget here at the bottom. I had mentioned earlier, you asked me to bring some rates back and so forth, dealing with our salt. Last year, the salt settlement from 2012, we got received, and that was $3,301.48. That went back into our salt fund. The summer of 2015, we purchased 300 ton of salt at $69.58 per ton, which amounted to $20,874. This went into our storage shed, and we have now, with what was in there from last year, we have 600 ton ready to start the snow season. Then the winter of 2015, 2016, we went out to bid again with the state from ODOT, and our bid at this time is $55.86 per ton, and we took the 1,000 bid limit. It came in from Detroit. We can buy 100,000 ton of, or 1,000 ton of salt from Detroit salt, or we can buy 1,100 maximum, or we can buy 900 minimum. So with the salt that we have in our barn now, with what we have here, this should make us in pretty good shape, providing we are having the winters we have. Also, if you've been reading the paper, and I had the article down here, the state is switching more to brine on wintry roads, and Tyson's been in direct contact with the ODOT and so forth. We work with the, the county on that, and we'll be using brine. We went through that process last year. Tyson, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, or just that we're going to use some, we've got the capabilities of using some brine.
We have a brine for here.
Yeah, and you buy the brine from ODOT.
No, ODOT is going almost totally to brine, aren't they?
No.
Not quite. I thought I read that...
Those articles made it sound that way.
Yeah, and the blade did.
On the major interstates like 75, 475, and 23, or anything in District 2, they're going to spray with brine. But to do that, you have to have traffic on it to keep it broke up, and the snow melting. You know, we can't do that around here because after midnight...
Nothing.
We don't have hardly any traffic, so we are going to use brine, but not like the state is going to use it on the interstates. But we'll try to use it as much as we can, because it is a lot cheaper than rock salt.
And I have here Tyson will budget in his 203 and 204 account for these expenses for next year, so we'll be seeing what he, he will not only budget for what we're buying, but for some brine also.
That's all I have.
That's another, that's another thing.
Thank you.
You know, you jump from, you jump from, with our street department, you jump from leaves, which are heavy into right now.
Right now.
And then you jump to snow, and then if you get a storm, you, you have sticks and everything of that nature, and that's, that's another good thing that we have going.
Tyson, that, that 300 ton, it appears we bought that in the summer of this year, okay? So like, is that something that, first, like, first thing, first in, first out type thing? Or isn't that make any difference with salt? So that 300 ton, if we go ahead and order, you know, a thousand ton, or whatever, 900 ton, we just put it right on top of that 300 ton that was originally in the, in the shed since this summer?
No, we won't. We have until, I think, the end of March to buy it, to take delivery of it.
Of the...
So as we need it, we have to make room, we call and we bring it as we need it.
So you use, what I'm, I get, that's what I'm getting to. You use up the 300 ton before...
You use up the three hundred ton before you get any more salt in or thereabouts, you know, within a week or two or something like that. You won't just dump nine hundred ton back in on top of that three hundred.
No, the...
Hopefully be going.
Seven hundred is in now.
Right.
We can't get any more.
Gotcha.
Okay.
More questions on the salt?
Anything more on that, Tyse? Okay.
Then our usual thing here, that Bryan city offices will be closed on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, and Friday, November twenty-seventh, in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. And this Thanksgiving and Christmas are the days that we do not pick up trash. So Thursday and Friday's trash will be picked up on Friday. So that's a reminder to citizens, Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday's trash will be picked up on Friday after Thanksgiving. So our people will be out picking up trash when other people will be out shopping.
Shopping. Black Friday.
Not me. So just a reminder of that.
All right. Anything else then, Mayor?
I believe, oh, I will say that, and this might even take a special meeting, we do now have some costs back for the digesters out at the wastewater plant that have, they've been looking at and so forth. And I have made copies of all that and will, it will definitely be talked about at our next meeting, but it even could take a special meeting. That's another area that we're really going to have to look at is our wastewater plant. And that has to be maintained by fees again. And we are one of the lowest area for fees out there. And we've been spending a lot of dollars out of the half percent. We did that for the equalization pot. I think we have a debt, Lori, of what, around five hundred thousand of that. We're paying off that. The other debt is paid off at the wastewater.
Right, we have one currently outstanding for sanitary sewer.
But if observation comes up that we're going to have to put a million or two million dollars in our wastewater to keep up, we're going to have to look at rate increases along that line because that's, that's something that's going to maintain itself also. And EPA is, is a leader in keeping everyone on that.
Oh, boy, yeah.
So we do have that. They just came in and I do have all those, every digester, there's about twenty-six to thirty pages, I think I showed Tommy when they come in. So the page like twenty-seven is the one you have to look at, what the cost is and what they think we should put in it. So we're going to have to make some decisions there. You showed me three, basically, proposals? Yeah. Are, I mean, is that what it is? You take one of the three? No. Or you have to take all three? That's three digesters. Digestor one, digestor two, digestor three. Yeah. And then is there something else that's needed out there? So as we talk with Rick and his budget, then, and we definitely got to look at that. Well, I guess the shocker in that whole thing is the fees. Yes. It's unbelievable. And that didn't even include, I don't think engineer, we'll have to review that. As I say, it might take a special meeting just on that issue before the end of the year here. I would recommend we do that. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, that's all that I have.
All that you have, all right. Ben, do you have anything?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Tyson, do you have anything more?
Officer.
Chief Willis?
Officer.
Chief Shiters?
Yes, I do. It has to do with Thanksgiving. As we're enjoying the Thanksgiving break, Fire Department just asked that please be careful with your cooking of the turkeys and pumpkin pies and enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you. All right. Tommy?
No, I have nothing, thanks.
Okay, Rick?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Dick?
Nothing.
Dick?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Lori?
No, sir.
Rhonda?
No, sir.
Mary, anything?
I too wish all, everyone a very happy Thanksgiving in season.
All right. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.